Well, and that was it. I mean, when we reviewed it, it was, I want a business, but it's not going to look any different than it did before the business. That's exactly what residential businesses are all about. The minute it looks different, it's not a residential business.
Well, I was hoping...
It's a pretty simple criteria.
Because Boyd always asked the question, now you know not to do this and this and this. Boyd wasn't even on the city council at the time.
They've been preaching that doctrine since the beginning of time.
There are many businesses, you just need an address. You might do some paperwork, but there's no... And that's the purpose.
Yeah. I've been waiting to get my printer fixed so I could print, because I want to fill out the complaint form on Word and do it right without, because I make so many mistakes, I have to read, you know?
The reality is, the minute they take it outside their house and put it anywhere in their yard, almost invariably, it's breaking some rules. I mean, it's just hard not to break a rule.
But see, the reason he's paying the $30 is because it's at one, it's not at his house, it's in a separate field. If it's in his house, the business license is free. But if it's in a different location, like, yeah...
I didn't know that. Is that true? A residential business license is free?
Yeah, a residential business license is free, but if you...
I just...
We charge like 75 bucks.
No, the commercial business licenses are 100.
No, but I mean, are you sure?
I'm positive. Look it up.
So it should at least cover the cost to process the license.
Right, and that's why I'm really shocked. I can understand a reduced fee, but no fee, that one surprises.
We actually talked about that in the office. Even Ken was in there, we were talking about it. And I said, you guys should charge something just for the time.
Well, yeah.
But the reason they charge him $30 is because it's not at his residence, it's in the field, it's in a different location, other than on his...
It's probably they.
Does that make sense? But I wanted to pull it up, and I wanted to look at the minutes.
Of course, the field is not...
She's breaking the rules, she's walking on it.
What I wanted to do is, I wanted to put it in a difference.
She's just resting it on the floor.
The "I don't know" doesn't...
All righty.
This is the original minutes. It's a fanny pack. That works. Anyway, now they got my printer fixed, I can do all this.
Put your demo pic away.
Yeah. Oh, I'm so happy that thing's working. I just, these newer printers, you can't buy aftermarket because they got the computer set and the printer that you have to buy their own, and I don't want to do that.
Did you do the pledge last week, or last meeting?
Just, I know, I just wanted to work.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Lou, will you lead us to the pledge?
I will.
The first day back to school, when I lost my leg, some kids were... And they were just being funny, you know? I was in the lunchroom, and they took my crutches. I started hopping around the halls looking for them. Of course, I couldn't do that, now I'd break my hip. But I was walking around the halls, hopping around the halls looking for my crutches. They were just, they were friends, and so, you know, that's what friends do. Anyway, it was funny.
Well, we are past time, so we'll start the work session. We're here to discuss our general plan open house. So... I think where each of us has taken a... A part of this general plan and made a presentation on it. I think it may be wise to keep that same person representing that portion of the general plan in the meeting with the public. And we can... I think we ought to put four of us here. And if all of us are here, is there seven of us? Or eight of us?
Are these chairs stackable? Can we get them out of here?
I think we can.
Yeah, I guess they are stackable, aren't they?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, you've got, you could make six stations in this room if you wanted to.
Well, and, but we can use the senior center.
Okay, well, there you go.
So what I'm thinking is, you know, the corners in here, same thing in the senior center, and an opportunity to address anybody in the public that wants to talk about the components that we covered in our... And we can each do individually handouts. We can do, we can set up so that the videos run in the hallway. And I think that might be of value. What have been your thoughts? And then advertising, we need to talk about as well. So what are your thoughts on presenting this as the public comes in?
Mine's going to be easy, and it'll be very similar to the past. I'll have a chart showing all of the active transportation pathways in the city. We'll have on display our booklet showing the description of each path. I'll have a bunch of post-it notes for people to post where they would like to see new ones. And there will be some kind of a form for them to comment or fill out. And that's it. I don't plan anything more sophisticated than that.
So do you want to put where we have master planned parks roughly?
Well, but somebody else has got parks.
But isn't that, and I realize that, but isn't that also a key component of your...
Well, it would be smart if the two of us were in the same place. You know what I'm saying? Because he, I'd rather him answer parks and his rationale for parks, where they're located and so forth. But I agree completely with you. If you configured this, I would put parks and active transportation in the same place.
Okay, so...
And if you're talking about configuration, adjacent to one of those two would be the roads and circulation, traffic pattern. Great case. Job, you know, because that interfaces with at least active transportation. So I'm just trying to get the... If they're going someplace and they kind of got the same mindset, have them all in the same place, or near each other at least.
Okay. I think that's wise. Any other thoughts?
Sorry, I've stuck on a phone call. What is this, just two...
So this is the senior center. This is city council. So what was your, which video did you do?
It's a great question.
Been that long, man?
I know. Land, land use.
I went back and looked at...
I feel like...
One of them that I did today, and it feels like...
Of forever.
Of forever, though, yeah.
I'm pretty sure I'm land use.
So I will take moderate income housing. I suspect that's going to get the...
You'll get some traffic.
And maybe even some anger.
Yeah, best if you use the townhouse, or if you use some of those volatile words.
I'd bring that up. Townhouse, whole neighborhood.
I'll just go straight to apartments, by the way.
There you go. High density.
High-rise apartments.
The beauty of far west, and when the subject of apartments comes up, we have not seen the need for apartments.
We really haven't.
And so for a developer to come in who wanted to build apartments, he would have to demonstrate in some convincing way that there is a legitimate need for apartments in far west, that it benefits the city in some way. I've written the last, well, since the moderate income housing report was required, I believe I've written them all. I've ended each of them with the same statement, that is, that we have seen a need for a decrease, not an increase, in moderate income housing. The challenge that we have now, and you can, this is my boss, I'm sorry.
That's a good point.
That's his secondary boss. The one that pays the money, not the one that he does this to.
In front of Lee Dickamore's house, they got these signs up. This one made me laugh. It says, "Shopping with your husband is like hunting with the game warden." I just saw, they have these, they have this, they just assigned that, they just change out of what's in while we drive by and ran. I never liked, hardly liked my life.
So Lou, we had a trail screening last night.
Oh, my crap.
You're getting old, dude.
Is there more than just you two on the trails committee?
I'm embarrassed to say, I had it on my calendar.
Okay, I was like, that, let me see, you went by yourself.
He's the platoon leader, and he's the platoon.
Mayor for Robert Alexander.
Good, good.
He wanted to come to the open house, Robert, to help with discussing trails.
Yeah, that would be very good. Very much appreciated.
And then there were some maps, too, that, they're all in that, but they still have kind of our current trail system.
And that, I was just telling Ted, my concept of what would be presented in the open house would be that map. The most recent trail map, the book showing our description of each trail, some kind of post-it note thing where they can post where they think new ones would be, and then some kind of a forum where they could write down just some comments or whatever. Does that seem reasonable? So, yeah. I apologize. Did you come up with some earth-satyr stuff?
We just talked about two things mainly, the park, park kind of transit trail system marked off with signs and then the, what do they call it, the share or something, painted on the road.
Oh, the, oh, the lane share?
Yeah.
Whatever they call it.
Lane share symbols on the road.
Not signs, but painted on the asphalt?
Yeah, there'll be some, some share symbols on the asphalt. We're going to have some, some labels, you know, to, like at each point in the trail, if there's a decision to make.
Okay.
Oh, wayfinder. Don't they call them, don't they call them wayfinders or something? The signs, yeah.
Yeah, the sign that I...
So on the, pinned on the road, there'll be a target, right? Along with the...
Yeah, something like that. And then we talked about the canal.
How is that coming?
So the mayor said the, the Bureau of Revelation said get permission from the canal company, but I think we've based it overseas, the canal.
Yeah.
And the Weaver Basin said get permission from the Bureau of Revelation.
Go to mom and go to dad.
So mom received all both of them, and then mayor had to...
Give them on a conference call, say, okay, fine. That's cool. That canal system would be perfect.
Little trail already there.
I know there, it is, it is.
No maintenance?
No maintenance.
And it's connect, there's pretty decent connectivity.
Yeah, they may want to do the same, it's on, we're using it. I don't think that's a big deal.
Because it even goes along and goes... The thing is, is that they, they run a tractor and a brush hog down there, yeah.
They do that, but they may say, if we take it over some trails...
Just run a brush hog down there with them. But even at this, even at the southeast corner of the Smith Park, it comes off, there's already a...
Oh, yeah, there's an obvious entry there.
Right, yeah.
And then there's, there's already in my subdivision, there's agricultural right-of-way. They put, they put a path, a paved path up to the canal, probably. And it spans and gated, and it's, it'll be a good access point for we'll get permission to use it. And then we're just talking about at the gates where, you know, you cross all the major roads and stuff, we'll just do like they do on the rail trail and just take out a little piece of barbed wire bits that's on the side of there, just make it wide enough to walk through.
Not wide enough for an ATV, yeah. That's cool.
And we're talking, I have to put no motorized vehicles on there.
Yeah, they've even got them down in Hooper. They've got the trails alongside the road out there. Got them everywhere.
We want to use western freeway, but the trail can go east of the freeway, too. Would you tie it in Mary's later, Lou?
So we would just try to get permission for the whole thing. On the, on the Wausau State Regional Council, they had a, they had a, in the future, they have a pedestrian bridge over the freeway for the canal, the freeway to the trail on the other side. So...
That's a little pine sky.
That's way, that's way in the future.
So we have, and I apologize, I, it's a personnel issue we have to deal with. So we'll need, Greg, yours is easy. We can just show where the bridges are proposed. You'll take care of that?
I'll take care of that.
Okay. Do we need any other maps from Jones that we don't already have?
Maybe not from him, but I would, somebody ought to print up a nice bold lettered sign for each of these stations, so somebody doesn't have to go up and figure out who's there. They can walk in the room and see, bop, 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 bop.
I can do that where...
You know, just, it's just easier to, for people to navigate around rather than have to ask.
Okay.
Something you want to explain to Jones, play four with 36?
Probably as big as they're going to give you.
Well, they don't have to be fancy.
No, I mean, they can, they can go on the wall of a beach station. And I think we can have...
Imagine tape them on the wall, yeah.
Yeah, we can do something here, I would think. I don't, I don't think we need to pay a printer. So what did I miss? I apologize.
You're fine.
Anything? Economics.
Economics, I got economics.
What was Steve over, or was he over...
Parks. These are parks and recreation.
And fiber, right?
Yeah, and infrastructure and stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah, I, we ought to avoid the fiber conversation right now. If your internet's been anything like mine lately, that'll just stimulate angry people, but...
Did you switch to Connect?
No, I haven't switched. I'm on the verge of switching, though, because...
Horrid Connect?
What I'm, my Expedia has been horrid.
Are you on Comcast? Expedia?
I think it's Infinity.
Expedia is just a website.
He is a travel website.
So where are you going this time? Disneyland again?
No wonder you're not getting the internet.
Somebody suggested I go to a spot in California, and I told them today, if I say California to my family, they put on their bunny ears and are sitting, or their mouse ears, and are sitting waiting to go. They think California exists within the boundaries of Anaheim, and that's all that's in California.
Or Utah.
So...
So you're still on, you're still on Comcast or Infinity?
So there's community vision and character. Who had that?
It's over everything.
I would shift in a minute, but we haven't got enough sign-ups.
Down there, you don't?
I don't, Far West Drive.
Mine is land use. No, no, mine's not land use.
Mine's land use.
Sorry.
I'm just going through the list. Economics.
Did anybody do two videos besides me?
Transport and circulation, community facilities.
That one's mine. Community facilities.
Parks and recreation.
What, what are you going to do with that in open house?
I'm drawing a blank.
You want to help me with...
No, I just don't, I just don't see that.
No, I could work with, I could work with Geneva on land use, because it's pretty much...
Same place.
One of the same, seriously.
What'd you say you were supposed to?
Community facilities.
So what you need to do is get with Nate and see if they have any conceptual drawings. And then you need pictures of what we have.
I took pictures.
And then if he has any conceptual drawings of anything new that we're going, like the...
The new city shops.
And then maybe a...
Oh, that's a good, actually, that's a great idea.
What do you see is a need of the city as the people come through?
Okay.
That is something you should highlight, the new city shops in the public. The public parks building, too.
I don't know, I won't even suggest this, but the building we still own...
The old city offices.
You want to open Pandora's box on that one?
Well, actually, that was, that's actually, I actually addressed that, I believe.
So pre, pre-COVID.
That pump track?
I brought it for you. I'll show, I'll give it to you.
My estimate on, I think we're going to have to put $100,000 into that building.
Are we talking about the old city building?
The old city.
Because we talked about that, it's not even up to code, it's not.
I think when you tear into that, tear the roof off...
You almost have to flatten it and start over.
Well, no, there, there's a lot of useful property there.
They use the basement. The basement's full of records.
But it needs a new roof, I think it needs new HVAC. It, other than the shell, I don't think anything in there is of any value. And then I think if we're going to make it a usable type, whether it be an activities building or whatever it might be, there needs to be some design change.
Well, and I guess I'm talking less about the building and more about getting feedback on the concept of a community center, separate from the senior center.
That's what they're looking at.
Well, and I...
And that was, that was what we were talking a lot about, you know?
And I think that's what we should do with that building, so...
So it's, I mean, we're, open houses, get feedback, so...
Maybe, maybe someone comes in with this great idea.
So, I... Now, $100,000, in my opinion, and Josh disagreed with me. He thought we could do it cheaper than that. But with the way things have changed, a hundred grand, may not even do it now. That's just the shell. So if we change that, if we want to do any additions, anything like that, that's going to be more money.
And I would, and I would focus less on the cost and trying to get some real finger on the pulse of how much interest there is in it. If the interest is low, you're not, you're, you've stopped talking about it. But if the interest is high, then you start saying, is your interest high enough to pay the price? But we haven't polled the public for that one way or the other.
If, if you had that and the concept of a cemetery under, under your...
Oh, you'd have plenty of...
You'll have, you'll have plenty of conversation, and the cemetery people are hilarious. The majority, far and away the majority who came in and opposed it in the past, walked in and said, oh, I have lots somewhere else, we don't need a cemetery. And there were even prominent citizens, in fact, I think there were even a couple on the city council at the time, and I'm, you know, we're not talking about you.
No, we're talking about...
We're talking about the long-term needs of the city. And it was, but it was really fascinating. I think there were two members of the city council at the time who told, told me to my face, well, I have my lots, we don't need a...
The other thing is you...
Okay, well, then forget it, just write it off.
Well, no, but there was strong polarity between, we had a specific location we were considering, and where you lived relative to that location influenced dramatically your attitude about the cemetery.
At one time, they actually considered it right here.
Yeah, that was...
And that's actually, it would be almost no cost.
It would be.
Put a cemetery right there. Now, the Little League football team couldn't use it to practice, but...
Well, we're actually looking at a dog park out there.
We're trying to extract opinions from the public. I would throw it out there.
And so you could say, do you think it's a good idea? Where do you think we should put it? How many lots do you think we should have? How many acres should we secure?
Manage it?
Yeah.
That's, that's my biggest concern, is how is it going to be managed? It's going to...
If, if people that live over here actually understood what's coming in 20 years, they would be begging for the city to put a cemetery there. That's the only protection they have.
Hey, so...
They don't understand, they don't get it.
It's a good idea where to locate it. Now, you mentioned something earlier, besides the, you mentioned something, something about...
So you're talking about community center?
Community facility, yeah, or what to do with the community center.
Yeah, just, and interestingly... Well, it's, it's more than that, is I would, I would recommend just finding out the level of interest in a community center. What kind of use would it be? What kind of demand would there be? And incidentally, we do have a spot that it could be there, rather than focus on the building, to say.
Another option is they could put a community center here and put the senior center there.
Right.
There's good and bad both ways. That, I believe there's more room there.
Yeah.
They actually located there, too.
Yeah.
But you, you mentioned something else at the beginning about what other things that they recommend that the city needs, or you said something about...
Well, you could say, what are, what do you see as the needs of the city? What facilities do you see? And you'll get things like swimming pool.
Splash pad, I get that all the time.
Splash pad's not, in concept, is fine. The challenge with a splash pad is somebody's going to get hurt. You're going to get sued.
Yeah, but it's just a money pit. You gotta pay, you gotta hire somebody to...
And, yeah, somebody has to be there. No. But in, in all fairness, is it a need of the city to have one? I, I mean, I'm of an age, I don't need a swimming pool. And there's one in North Ogden.
Yeah, they got a nice setup, yeah.
Beautiful one in Brigham City.
Even Harris is sure... I think Harris really even has one, though.
I'm not so sure the potential for injury would be... For some reason, because we have a lot of athletic events in the rec center over there. There's a potential for injury. Every time somebody goes on a soccer field, every time somebody goes in that, that roof, that building. It's my, that's my point exactly.
Yeah, those splash pads to me, just look bad.
They do, they do.
Kids have so much fun. If you've ever sat and watched children in a splash pad, it, I mean, if you ask pretty much anybody, should we get one, you know, after they've spent an hour watching a group of children on one? Oh, we need one. That's what you should get.
I get hit up for one for, almost once a week at least.
So you might just ask for what facilities do we need? And just, just, things like a pool and a splash pad, just say, you know, we'll take that under consideration. Thank you for the information.
Okay, I'll, I'll get ahold of Nate this week and then address the new city shops. Cemetery, community center, interest in the old city offices, uses, demands.
Can you get any? Doll that up any way you want.
I would suggest that you have some kind of, I'd like to walk away with some numbers and...
Yes, especially the cemetery.
And what I would suggest in your case, that you have a list of all these items. A yes, no, or maybe, or whatever. So when the dust settles, we can say, okay, this many respondents. Otherwise, we walk away and say, we had some wonderful discussions, but nothing happened.
I was just thinking, just get in a tick sheet, yes or no, on cemetery.
And I did that on, when I did the cemetery event. That was dead even.
You could already anticipate some on your list and then put other there.
Right.
And then...
And I just, I could just print something off and just write it down.
What was most useful at the end of the last open house was the mayor was able to summarize some of those pie charts. Well, you got to have numbers to make pie charts. You can't have conversations, so...
On, under modern income housing, I, I am going to put up some pictures of townhomes and see if we can't do some type of, of other pictures that would represent. This is coming.
Well, it's a matter of time.
And, you know, I'm, I'm, what information should I gather? Because this is a really hard thing to address when you don't have the backstory, when you don't have the information. So somebody coming in and saying, by damn, we're never having townhouses, doesn't help me. We could put up, what proposals do you have to accommodate the state's requirement for moderate income housing? And there, so I talked to Scott Howell on the way home, and they are actually building a tiny home village in Salt Lake City for the homeless.
I heard about that.
And that, that is, Scott's one of the guys over the whole homeless thing for the state. I got that from him tonight, so...
I remember them saying something on the news a while ago about the concept or something.
Well, it's, there's more challenges, and we won't go into that, but still, if, you know, if you can't take your dog, and you can't use drugs, and you can't smoke, and you can't drink.
That leaves out 90% of them.
Well, this, yeah, it's, I only brought this up to show you an example. This is the camel's nose in the tent for tiny homes.
Oh, yeah.
And I think it's 200 that they're going to build. Only 200 to 400 square feet, and it's going to be a tiny home village. And so... And so if it goes well, uh.
Do they rotate them in and out or require what?
Don't know any, I, I stay.
It's interesting to see how.
Single level?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I would do it on top.
So.
Stack them up.
They could put a bunk in there, but.
Anyway. So where do we, cause I, I mean, we need to lead this a little bit. What type of data do we want to gather? I don't want townhomes. Really, we can gather that.
And, and I would, I, I'm, I'm wondering if you could have some visual examples of some of these choices. Because my guess is there's, there's a mindset on some. They close their, their, the door before they even know what the options are. And to me, I think it would be useful to, to have some, some visual examples of these choices and get their opinion on them. And know that they're responding to what you're asking the question about.
Would it be more, would it be better for us to just choose those areas that we've pinpointed for something like that and just say, here's where they may be? We, we don't, the things next week, we don't have time to just put together what we think townhomes and things like that are gonna look like.
Well, you could just grab those off the internet.
But we're not the developer. We're not, I mean, why don't we, why don't we pinpoint the places where they.
I'm just, I'm talking about a general example. Yes, just something like that. Uh, there's really two fronts. One is just how they feel about these, these housing types. And the other one, I think is a very important one. And if, if they were to occur in Far West, where would you prefer them be?
Lay that data.
Pardon?
Input on our chosen bullet points to meet the moderate income housing requirements, like, you know, accessory dwellings.
You could see.
I.
If they're on our plan, then that's maybe something that.
So, internal accessory dwellings, I'm not that concerned with, cause.
Right, but external is one.
External, I'm very, cause external messes up your infrastructure. Cause what you do is you double the infrastruc-, so your infrastructure is designed for a certain number of, of residents. If you allow external.
You got all the utility lines are separate, double set.
Right, so you could, and, and depending on how that door gets swung open, they can take a half acre lot, put four homes on it. And, uh, so what would happen with all of the, are, are we gonna have eight homes on every one acre lot?
Is that gonna be?
That's more of a subdivision, isn't it? I mean, that's a subdivision of your lot.
Well, it i- it is, but it isn't. So it depends, like I said, it depends on how the door. This is how, one of the challenges that our neighbors in West Haven had, when they opened the door, they swung the door open wide. Those doors are really easy to open.
And they were.
They are incredibly difficult to close. And so when we open one of these doors, uh, we have to be very, very cautious in, in how we open it, because.
It's my impression, though, that we can't, we will not be able to indefinitely prohibit. We've just gotta decide what restrictions we're gonna place on. Am I wrong?
No, you're absolutely right. So we're, at some point, they're going to come down, and we've known this, but we have been, we've been very conservative in our approach with moderate income housing, and I believe we've been wisely so. But at some point, and we're going to be told, you gotta have it. So another, uh, a- another option here is, do we act now? And, and make a zoning based on choices we make? Or do we wait until the state imposes requirements on those that have not set any of these standards? And I don't have the answer for that. And in, in, one side of me frankly thinks we should take that ordinance we wrote and adopt it and go with it, because then we can say, we did this, we, we can check that box. The other side of me, there's, there's, there's two issues, is are they going to come down and say, you're gonna have to do higher densities anyway? Which is entirely possible. They could do that. Uh, or they might say, you know, Far West acted, you're fine, but your neighbor that didn't do anything, Hooper City, has chosen not to do anything.
Well, it's, it's interesting to me, because if you've set up a sewer system to accommodate a certain amount, how can, you know, if the state imposed that on you, does that mean the city would have to enlarge the accommodation for some of those things? Or put more lines on secondary water, so the pressure would be fifteen pounds per inch, you know, rather than sixty-five? No, I, I'm, I'm wondering, a- at some point, it's not, it's, it's a city issue on how you're gonna provide the utilities.
It, it's kinda like they put in that new sewer line from Bermuda out to the new system, and that's supposed to accommodate everything else that's left to be, to be developed. If they want you to add to that, you know.
Have you heard me say this before, but you have to understand, a significant portion of your state legislature are developers.
I know.
And they are development friendly. It's not that they're bad guys, but they are development friendly.
Thing is that we're, we're a lot left holding the bag and funding more lines.
Well, I don't think they have a problem.
Of course they don't. It's not their money.
Two falls back on the developer, too. If they want to do that, then they have to, most of the time, they have to pay for the infrastructure.
Okay, well, there you go.
So, well, what you, what you have, just.
We know that. Well, they'll never, you have to have a, well, but that's.
Yes, but you have to.
But they'll contribute to it.
If you wanna build a hundred homes.
Same as a bridge, same as all.
You have to have a hundred connections of every type.
Well.
You should find out their input on what, if they agree with our options, you know, we came up five. What are their opinions on those?
I think, I think that's a good idea, because, right, we want to get more information to the public. So if we're, if we're this is something we're planning on implementing, and we say, here's five of our favorite the city, I mean, the, the state is for, is having us go forward, what is, out of all these, what are your favorites? Rank them.
I'm willing to guarantee you at some point, uh, townhomes, patio homes, and those homes where you build a group of four, I can.
Oh, like by the saw farm, or by the barn, both of us.
Right, right. You're gonna have to have those.
Right, but if you got input on those, maybe people, I think people are more open to the idea if they see it, instead of just be told like, oh, well.
That's true. That's true.
And that's why I get back to put some pictures, just examples with some, with some labels and find, just get a feel for where they're at.
And I will do that.
Uh. Allow them to, allow them to rank vote. What do you like first? One, two, three, four, five? One, two, three, four, five?
No. A lot of people want it, cause they want to stay in the city.
I decided to do that. I live on an acre lawn. I have central irrigation water, so I have secondary water. I could.
We had that.
And my constraining factor side has always been, I don't have a big enough roadway, which wouldn't matter then. So, but, but I'm, I'm thinking, don't you, don't we owe it to the public to at least get a sense of what, what they think about that? That's what, that's what I think open houses are all about, you know? And if you, if there's not much interest, fine. If everybody that walks up to your station says, I think that's a pretty good idea, then I think we oughta.
Have we advertised this yet? I haven't seen.
No.
No, and, and we need to spend the last few minutes, so.
Isn't this next week?
Yes, so.
It's a week from tomorrow, isn't it?
It's a week from tomorrow. Uh, so we each need to have preparation done for our individual, uh, in our individual booth. Just, so watch your video. Make sure you are able to answer any questions within your video. And, uh, make sure you have some way for the, for them to express themselves. For instance, what economic changes do you think we should bring to Far West City? What businesses do you think we should try to attract? And how you expect us to do that? Word better than that, though. Uh, community vision and character was.
It was kind of overall, it was general, kinda.
Oh, do we?
Texting on.
Oh, that's yours?
Briefly on everything.
Okay.
Should I get a map of where we currently have the C1 and the?
Right, I, I would have a map and say, this is our, these are our commercial zones, including M1.
Economics. So they probably just need a visual to see where.
Well, we can put anybody.
I could share, cause all I need to like is a.
Did you use that map right over there? That one's updated enough. One on the far left.
But, but I would.
Then let them just see where the areas are, what you want to bring.
And where else, where else do you want commercial?
Maybe Steve can send me the open space map. I'd like that, too. Doesn't he have that park, maybe his parks, open space thing that he did at one point?
Yeah, would you, can you talk to him, contact him and do that? And then community facilities was Lyle. This is Ted. Okay.
This is just my opinion. If you're talking advertising, Katie Williams is a spectacular person to get the word out.
She's gonna have to be with this short.
She's very, very good.
I did have the idea. I mean, I know it's simple, but you've got all those signs out about the general plan.
Yeah.
You had us, he's something on there. They're used to seeing a general plan. They can at least see.
Say Friday, August first.
Like where, you know, you see people put them on the corner, so it's like, uh.
Open house.
Yeah.
Katie has a way of just getting it out there.
I think, uh, every single booth, too, we should have a, the sign up and the text to get onto the cities.
Every, oh, I see what you're saying. So they can scan the QR code.
So that you can just.
That's what we should, do we have an extra one of those that can come with us?
Yes. We'll, we'll make sure that those are available.
Okay.
So she had on her, we can update the website to advertise for it. I don't think it's a hugely visited website, but it ought to be on there.
So we've got, I'll put it over here. So we've got the website.
Send out a text.
We've got that text, uh, and there's only about five hundred people there.
We have an email, too. Email assistance.
Same thing.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay.
Choose to be.
But they see it in use.
Uh, we've got Facebook.
And then the Far West Community Facebook page, too.
That's probably where Katie's gonna be.
Is it?
That official, she does all our social media posts. Like, she has a bunch of neighborhoods she's a part of.
Yes, she is. That's.
So that might be, like, I'm part of Mountain View Neighbors, but she's a part of, like.
She's on the Smiths.
She has a lot of them, so.
She's really good. She's just.
That would probably be.
She helped us out last spring with the.
So we can do, uh, flyers or something in the gym, the fitness center.
Put them on the bathroom doors at the Smith's Park.
Can you put them on the sign, the marquee?
Yeah, put it out here on the electronic marquee. And I could talk to Bubba about getting it out. I'll have to be there and help him, but get the sign up even to the Smith's Park, but.
Yeah.
But they, you know, put it out there on the marquee at the Smith's Park. I'll talk to him on the way, uh, I'll come over on Monday and see if I can snag Nate.
We should find a way to get a count, how many people actually come to it, too. So if it's successful, we can.
So here's the challenge. The, the, the last one that I was involved with that we counted, a hundred and forty-something. So the, the input we're going to get, if we follow historic trends, is statistically insignificant. So it, it's, it, it becomes challenging how much, how to weight this. And so we have to pay attention as we talk to people. And, you know, how much, uh, a- and you'll get a feel for, you know, is this a general opinion or is this an individual's opinion? And, and then we'll get back together. Just be careful of that, because, uh, you know, grab the sizes and pitchforks is usually an indication of one person's opinion. Uh, things that are more reasonable have a tendency to be more broad spectrum. So, uh, keep an eye on that. Other, uh, so we've got the website, the text or email, Facebook. I'll reach out to Katie tomorrow. Uh, the fitness center, city offices. Uh, the marquee. We might be able to get some signs at the parks, uh, see if we can't get something, you know, printed. Only has to last a week, even a matter of three days. So, uh, let me see what we can do. I will actually be out of town from Sunday to Thursday. So, uh, I will have all this done hopefully tomorrow before I leave, so, uh.
What's it running from? What time to what time?
Yeah, six to eight on Friday. Here, August fifth here.
Bringing any, like, cookies, donuts?
Uh.
Anything or no?
Well.
Did we have?
It doesn't matter to me.
Water and cookies?
Let me, uh, I'll just, I'll just see if the city can't pick something up.
Uh, what is it? Lockhouse?
And, yeah, and tha- and that's always, the older I get, the less important those things are to, I, I, you know, when I go to something like this, I wanna walk in, get some facts and leave, like.
But if we make it an event, there's more chance that people value it and see that we value it and.
Well, we've got five, we've got seven days to make it an event. It's a little.
I, we'll, we'll be fine. I- if we had four thousand people show up, we're not equipped to gather that kind of information anywhere.
Maybe rock stars.
I, I would, I would hate to think cookies would be the motivation to decide whether to come or not. No, that's, that's, that's kinda frightening.
Give them a bottle of water.
One, one thing I would suggest that each one of us assume responsibility, and that is, at the end of the open house, whether we use it in the form of a survey or what else, we summarize what we have garnered from the participants. We create a report of that, and that then can become available to the citizens in large as well. We may get some additional feedback if we do that. Uh, so that's not, that's not happy event sort of die.
So that we had the feedback from people that have watched the videos.
How many responses?
Uh, cause Steve is, that's way beyond my technological ability.
Yeah.
So.
I took the survey for everyone, and now they're up to like nineties, all of the views, so they're getting up there.
So, uh, people are watching them. I've actually heard really good reports. I got a very, very positive report from an individual who I thought would be a little bit critical of them. Told me that we knocked it out of the park with those. So, uh, I, I, I think the big issue is, is gonna, in fact, I think I might, well, we are, we've got Lyle in one. Community facilities and the moderate income housing likely will be the big draws. Uh, and, you know, we may. Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, that's a good idea, the pump track.
Yeah, I gotta throw that on there.
So I may bring Geneva up to help me with moderate income housing, put that, put those together. Uh, just, just because it may, you know, people don't like waiting. They wanna ask their question and move on, so, uh, we'll look at that, uh.
I know this is a weird idea, but do we have tablets or anything that we can gather data? Probably not.
Uh, I, I know you can do that. I know that's the popular thing to do.
The ultimate at the end, too. You can send them to your video to then take the survey for more information or something like that.
I told a young man once, I'm so old, I've actually drawn professionally on linen. Ten minutes later, he says, I'm sorry, I have no idea what you're talking about.
You should have told him, that would have really.
That would have thrown him. I've, uh.
What about stone? That would have really got him.
I'm not that far. I'll tell you, he looked at me like, when I explained it to him, cause he was a draftsman, he looked at me like I had a chisel on stone, so.
During the headlights.
Yeah, and, uh, I saw Matt, I just grabbed my walker and left. Anyway. Yeah, that, uh, uh, I've surveyed with a transit chain, so, anyway. I'm almost as old as Lou, not quite. Anything else we need to cover in this meeting?
So is there, so it starts, it's six to eight, right?
It's six to eight.
So we are all coming here at five? So we are all coming here at five, five thirty, what are we doing?
I think if we're here at five thirty, I'll s- I'll see if I can't get, uh.
Whatever you don't complete on that list tomorrow, will you email us out so we know?
Yes.
If there are things we need to.
We need tables, chairs.
Yeah, what about easel? Yeah, how would I? I, I gotta, I'd like to get a pump track, you know, printed off and put up there, and, and what else, I mean, easels or is there?
So I will ask them to have a table and chairs.
Okay, and I could just lay them on the table, I guess.
If you want anything other than table and chairs and the maps that we have here, you need to make arrangements to get that.
I think table and chairs would be fine.
Brendan and I called that one, so no one else can take that.
So, and we'll set, we'll actually set Brendan up underneath that.
Oh yeah, there you go, that's perfect, and then if you're up there with moderate.
You can just point that, we'll put moderate income housing over here, and, uh, and then you guys wanna report at the end of the day.
Yeah, or just, I don't care about the report so much, but just if you didn't complete any of that.
What else we need to do to help?
Okay. Uh, I, I actually really like where this is going, I, uh, if we got two hundred and fifty people to visit with us, I would be thrilled.
I'll be happy if fifteen people show up.
That, that'll actually, I mean, a hundred and fifty will be hitting the record, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be sad, I'm gonna push for lots of people to come.
I think you should. Go door to door in your neighborhood.
Record.
Uh, minimally, if two people show up, at least we've made, no, and I'm serious about this. We've made an effort to listen to people. If they don't come, that's not our responsibility, and this is a point the mayor has made, we have to go through the steps.
Right, and that's, that's why advertising is such a big push, cause a week, I mean, I, it, there's nothing we can do about now, but a week does not give a lot of time for people to find out about it.
Well, I think I.
If you tell them soon, you know, two or three weeks sooner, they forget.
I think actually the most success we're gonna have is having all that out there and then word of mouth. Just make sure that they're hearing about it, a week of.
I mean, I have things on my calendar for months, and then the stupid alarm goes off that says I've got ten minutes to get to Richfield.
Signs, I notice them, I bet most people do, if we just slap something on there, that's gonna be.
But if you put it out there.
A white, and like just white stands out and open house this day.
Like what invitation, send them out a month ahead of time, you forget, send them out two weeks at a time?
We should make sure with Steve though, whatever that cue, when you scan it and whatever pulls up, that there is some sort of link to whatever time the open house is.
Yes.
Because if they then can't find it, they're not gonna search any further. I don't know how those work. Well, it's like, as long as they can scan it and a little thing pops up, open house this time, or something.
Yeah, oh yeah, right there.
Like banner, you could even do banner at the top.
Yeah. And this, make sure we get it out of that marquee tomorrow. Okay.
You got a lot, yeah.
You got a lot of work to do tomorrow, Ted.
This is written in ink, this is a step up, this is not pencil. Step up for me.
Okay.
I didn't see you with your hammer and, and rock chisel, so.
Very, very close.
That part is I still write on linen paper.
We need to put these tables back.
Board of Mylar.
Well, you know, you, you hand somebody a, a, a board and a T-square anymore, and they don't even know what it is, let alone.
Well, you really wanna have fun, get a slide rule.
Oh, yeah.
And show that to a kid. They wouldn't have the slightest note.
No, that was.
Or even the ruler that has the three sides.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's all the different dimensions. Scale, you are right, I'm exactly what that is. My bad, sorry, sorry to scale, cause you're exactly right, that's what I use it for, to scale.
I'm sorry you're going through this, I know, but still.
I have a, it's a pain. Pretty nasty scar, it's kind of fun.
Wow, that's cool.
That's my scar on the one side. That's my big one, and then.
Bless your heart. Bless you.
And then that's the small one on the other side.
Man, make me look sick.
But, yeah, it's.
Wow, that's incredible.
I'm ready to get a good mix.
Yeah, well, it's nice to be able to sit without that heavy ball and chain at the bottom of your.
It's just one case, bud. I know, so just.
Search it up.
Yeah, just from Mountain View, I don't, I try to ask you. I don't know, I think they, they're pretty open. It's, it's not like spammy, it's really just like, when people lose a pad or something, they put it on there, but it's not, um, it's not too much.
Maybe talk to some people about, for example, we lost.
I know, like the guy across the street from me? Ours is like dead. And his is like this lushy one, I'm like, I've got to marry him. Sorry, I'm not spammy.
Lyle's used to.
I know, I still gotta try not to take a spill.
Dan? You can't, you can't put the light in until we, we've been whitening the bridge. And we've got the funding for it, it's just getting scheduled to get it done, so that I don't think they'll be putting the light in until that bridge is widened. But that's what they're doing with the construction, it's just that. You know, instead of having, coming out as, which way, you got to fix it. So you have defined entrances and, you know, and, and.
Make it less chaotic over there.
And start early, it's against the law.
See, if you see that.
Drives me nuts.
See what, what that extra lane on the outside is.
Called order of meeting, the Far West City Planning Commission will begin our meeting with an opening ceremony, if you'll all rise. Lou will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then Brandon will offer a prayer.
Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind and gracious Father in heaven, we're grateful for this beautiful day, this opportunity we have to live in this beautiful nation. And in Far West, we're grateful for the citizens, please bless us as we go about our business, that we will, um, do what is needed for our city to continue to be successful. Bless all the citizens and bless all those that need your help at this time, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you. Next item on our agenda is a report from the city council, Janelle, do you want us to bring you a mic, or do you wanna hobble up? All right. You look almost athletic on those crutches.
Okay, this is the report from our July twenty-first meeting. Um, we approved business license for Rocky Mountain Fence, um, I guess they had an approved site plan on conditional use already. And they've been delayed because of supply chain issues, they wanted to not be in debt, so the city council approved a business license, um, with the understanding that he'll continue to work on the site plan. Um, he expects to be done January of next year. Um, and then we heard another request from the Children's Justice Center, um, to use some of our ARPA funding for their new building. Um, we'd heard this before, our ARPA funding's kind of already, um, set for some things, but we tabled the motion to talk to Cody about some budget options, cause they gave us the option to like pay over the next three years, and it's something we would like to consider, but, so we are gonna talk to Cody. Um, we approved the conditional use for, um, the Monta- the Montano conditional use for warehousing with office space. Um, and then we set a work, a joint work session for August eighteenth with the planning commission to discuss the Bonneville Builders' um, proposal for that property north of twenty-seven hundred. We approved minutes, bills, business licenses, and then reported on assignments. Any questions?
Questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, we appreciate your report. The next item on the agenda is adding connectivity with Pleasant View City to the commercial and industrial development north of twenty-seven hundred north to the transportation plan in the general plan. So this is property that Pleasant View City and Far West City have jointly made a request for a ten million dollar grant to develop. Uh, after this went in, the letter was in your packet, we realized that those roads actually are not on our general plan anywhere, and so this is, is really checking a box, uh, to make that recommendation, uh, to the city council to, uh, just add these roads a- as part of the transportation plan. Any questions on that? Is there anyone in the audience that would care to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the planning commission for a motion.
I recommend, I'd like to recommend that we, uh, add the, uh, connectivity with Pleasant View City Commercial Industrial Developments north of twenty-seven hundred to the transportation plan in our general plan.
Thank you, a motion by Greg to add the roads as presented to our transportation, or to make a recommendation to the city council to add these to our transportation plan within the general plan, is there a second? Second by Lou, further discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, that motion carries. The next item on our agenda is to recommend to the city council approval or denial of a request of the Ramuda subdivision phase four, First Amendment located at twenty-six fifty-eight west, thirty-five hundred north. Is there someone here that would like to speak to that? Seeing none, what this is, uh, well, the, the challenge with this is the open space in Ramuda was part of the agreement made with the city for that development, it's a planned unit development. To add even a small amount to this one lot, changes that agreement and opens the door for other changes to that agreement. So, uh, so the owner of the, of the, of the land, and I believe he has some type of ownership with the golf course, has made this request, uh, the, the, and, and it's, this is not the one foot or how much ever he wanted, can't remember now how much he wanted to add to this, is not the issue, the issue is this changes the agreement made for Ramuda as a planned unit development, and opens the possibility for other changes. He wasn't here. So what does the planning commission wanna do with this?
I guess I have some questions.
Do you wanna let him speak?
Yeah.
So, are you folks here with, uh, the change to Ramuda? Please come to the microphone and introduce yourself and tell us what you wanna do. Please state your name and who you represent.
I'm Zachary Allen, I represent, uh, both the Ramuda Golf Course and my personal dwelling.
Okay.
Twenty-six fifty-eight west. Um, we, we live, uh, next door to the open space on the golf course, and we were trying to extend the property line about five feet into the golf course, so we could, uh, put on a, a third car garage on our house that I live at. Uh, that makes it so that it fits with your setbacks. And I know you've made some changes over the years, so the original setbacks were like ten on each side, and it's, it's now a total of twenty-four, so we're tr- we're trying to fix that.
Questions?
So you've got, you're acquiring golf course property in this change?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, see, it sounds, it sounds like you're trying to comply with our ordinance requirement for setback, I understand that. To do that, you would have to acquire golf course property.
Sir, you, you need to introduce yourself.
I'm his older brother, I am, uh, James Allen.
And who do you represent?
The Ramuda Golf Course.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
We are the owners, uh, joint owners of the golf course, so we're here.
Okay.
We were able to pass property to ourselves, in effect, to, to accommodate the setback.
All I was concerned is a private citizen decided I want to go on three and a half feet of the golf course.
I'm the caretaker, I'm living on, in this property right next to the course, but it has its own legal description and everything. Just.
Okay, other, other questions? Geneva, did you have a?
That was my question, how the golf course was owned.
Is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
Not that I can think of.
All right, super, go ahead and sit down.
So, I guess, why wasn't the, the development agreement included in our packets to review? Cause if this, if the point of it is that it opens all of these things, is, is there any need for anything while we're in this?
I, I don't know, I, I do know that this does change the original development agreement.
Makes it stricter. Stricter than the original. The original was ten feet on both sides, and you're saying I need to now comply with your new ordinances, which is the twenty-four.
But it, it, it changes it for one lot, it, it doesn't, it doesn't have global changes for the development. So we need to remember we're talking about one lot.
Oh, that's all we're talking about.
One lot.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So we're talking about one lot, but we are opening the, the development agreement for others to potentially request a change.
Yeah, but there's no lot, so it's not like we're taking it from another lot, it's just a big, so there's very few.
No, I, I understand, you're, you're, you're opening a can of worms is the cons- and it's not that that's, yeah, it's, so, the, the issue is, on the Ramuda Golf Course property, that, that planned unit development, if we allow a change in this lot, we will be setting a precedent for the rest of that planned unit development.
This lot is a little different because they actually are owners of both.
Both.
Where your others, your.
They would have to get an agreement, it's, 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 uh, and it's not that I am for or against either way. We just need to understand they won't own it forever. And it does open the, uh, it, it opens that planned unit development for other change.
And, and I think we're less vulnerable than you will as owning the golf course property. Perhaps, not, another person come in and say, I'd like to do the same.
Problem is, they'd have to buy on the side of their lot. It doesn't help to buy in the back, and there's only one lot that I can even think of that fits the situation.
Okay, well.
But say they wanna put a pool in, say they wanna put something in, then all of a sudden they wanna extend the back property line, then what happens?
They'd have to buy from the owner of the golf course. So usually, there's, there's more concern about lots getting smaller, not lots getting bigger, so.
Well, no, just setting.
No, actually, yeah, I'm, I am actually not concerned either way, my concern is we are setting a precedent, and because this is a, a, a planned development, this precedent is for the entire development. You, you can't say I'm going to modify one lot in an instance like this, that's not how. That's not how it works.
Okay. We have done, we have done some amendments before on other phases.
And I will say this, the requirement for 10 feet on one side, 15 on the other, I was involved in that and that was created because we were looking at residential dwellings and creating space between individual housing units. In this case, the setback is from an open space, which is, which is different than conceptually what we were looking at.
Going to look the same no matter what that, where that line is, it's going to look exactly the same.
Okay, so why don't you guys sit down? There's a legitimate argument on both sides of this issue, as I see it. The thing we need to consider is we are setting a precedent and what impact that will have in the future, I really don't know. It may not have any, but it potentially could.
The only thing that is a little different in this is that anyone that wanted to add to their lot would have to purchase it from them.
Right.
So that is like kind of your stopper of that, this continuing on. It's not like it is family owned behind, you know, those kind of things.
I also think it really doesn't, it's not, doesn't find the face of our intent with the setback.
And it doesn't change anything on those.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, I move, we recommend to the city council approval of the request, make sure, of the Ramuda subdivision Phase IV, First Amendment located at 2658 West, 3000 North.
So a motion by Lou to recommend approval as stated in the agenda.
Sorry, second.
And a second by Geneva, further discussion to this motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Greg votes nay on this. The motion does carry and I will make note of that in the report to the city council. I highly recommend you not be late to the city council meeting. You came within an ass whisker of this being tabled or getting a no vote, so I'd be early. Just a suggestion. Next item on the agenda is a request to amend the general plan to follow, to allow for the M1 manufacturing zone on the parcel listed located on the north Far West City boundary east of Interstate 15. This particular request falls outside of the C3 zone that has been in dispute on this particular piece of property. So this piece of property is more than 1,000 feet, 2,700 north and would not be considered a part of that zone. The properties are owned separately. The owner of this property has asked specifically that they be considered for an M1 zone. Is there a representative here from that? Why don't you come up and tell us a little bit about what you want to do? Please state your name and who you represent.
Okay, my name is David Felsted. I represent Helen Partners, who are the owner, actually the managing member of this property.
And I'm Jared Boyer. I represent Coleman and Group. We're partners on this property.
So tell us what you want to do.
Well, we want to, we want to develop industrial on this ground. We want it to be zoned the same way that the surrounding property is in Pleasant View City. We also own the Horseshoe Pond property directly to the east. And we also own the triangular piece going all the way north, directly north of this property. And you can kind of see where we'd like to bring a road across the north part of our property that's the Horseshoe Pond property and access this that would ultimately tie into the Far West, what is that, 1,900?
1,900 and Ruel and White.
1,900, yeah, and it'll connect over to Ruel and White. And so, you know, we, we're probably 2,000 feet, our south boundary line is probably 2,000 feet north of 2,700. A few weeks ago, we met with Ted and with the mayor and, you know, expressed our interest in having this rezoned so that it matches what's in Pleasant View and we can...
So tell us about the zoning in Pleasant View. What has Pleasant View done with that adjacent property?
Well, it's owned manufacturing. It allows distribution warehouse, same kind of use that we want to use on our property. All, and all three sides of our property.
Very good questions for these gentlemen.
Your voice faded, but I'm assuming you're gonna be using this for warehouses.
Distribution warehouse, right? That's what we'd like to do.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We appreciate you, your presentation. Further discussion from the Planning Commission.
I've driven it multiple times and it's very consistent with what's happening on the Pleasant View side. It's not interfering with our vision for what's south of it, so I see no reason at all for not approving it.
Okay, is that a motion, Lou?
Yes.
Motion by Lou to recommend approval to the city council to allow for a change to the M1 zone on the parcel listed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Geneva, further discussion to this motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Very much. What is the timeframe for getting?
This should be on Thursday's agenda, a week from today for the city council for approval.
Automatically then, great.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's the amendment to the general plan to be the reason?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is, this will be a recommend, will change the general plan. The way this was worded, it didn't actually get approved on our agenda, so then we'll have to put it back on our agenda the following week for...
For actual...
So have you done an application to zone, change the zone?
Submitted an application for this meeting, for rezone.
It didn't, it didn't get on our agenda, so that can't happen.
Part of the reason was is that...
So Lindsay responded and she said that they will hold our rezone application with the idea that they will submit on the agenda for a change in the general plan in lieu of the rezone application that had been submitted because we had, you know, discussed with the city, with the Planning Commission, they knew what we were trying to do, so they would go ahead and use that as a submission for a change to the general plan for this meeting and tonight. It's a recommendation to the city council.
It's still have to have a public hearing though.
Yeah, yeah, we have to go through a process, so we'll do it as quickly as possible.
So what will happen next week? The city council will approve their amendment to the general plan.
So we will recommend to the city council a change to the general plan, then we will have...
We'll have to come back here for a rezona.
Well, then, well, we'll actually have to have a public hearing, both to change the general plan and to rezone. We can do those simultaneously and...
Or the Planning Commission.
I would think so.
It'll be, yeah.
I'll check on that.
We have a...
Yeah, so we do need to take that action, but we can't do what I was thinking we could do.
See, we have to have formal approval of the general plan before we can then address a change to the rezon. There's more steps there than you'd like, but...
No, actually, well...
That's our understanding from Lindsay.
So can we set a public hearing without being, without it being on the agenda where this has been discussed multiple times in city meetings?
I think so because in effect, we've already had one public hearing.
And we're not a pool...
And this is, this is a more conservative presentation than the previous one. So might make sure we're, we're abiding by the law, but in terms of course intent, I would say yes.
So Lou, would you like to amend your agenda, or excuse me, your motion to recommend a change to the general plan and to consider, no, that's not right either.
No, just to have...
Because we've had a public hearing that included this property.
That's right.
So I believe we can take action on this.
If it were on our agenda. See, I don't think the issue is a public hearing. I think we had the public hearing.
Okay.
I do too.
Because it was, it was more inclusive and it was more restrictive than that. So I, and remember there wasn't any...
Yeah, there wasn't anyone, yes.
There wasn't anybody here. So the real issue is making sure we have had, we've taken action on the change to the general plan and that's passed through the city council for approval. And then we've had on our agenda the rezon and then we route that through the city council for approval.
Then that would put them still on the next Planning Commission meeting for rezon.
But at least we don't have to worry about a public hearing.
Yeah, that's fine. Does that make sense? So next week you'll go for the amendment to the general plan, then the following week our Planning Commission will then actually motion or act, take action on the rezon, which then will go to the city council and it'll be rezoned.
Call the city.
Before the city council, before the general plan.
Yeah, so you're gonna be seeing us for the next three weeks.
Call the city at about 10 o'clock tomorrow and I will make sure we can do all this by then, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your, your support, your efforts here. Thank you. The next is to set a public hearing to consider a request of a rezon of the Ogden Cycle Association Properties located at 2390 West, 4000 North with the parcel numbers listed, from a C2 zone to an A1 zone. Is there anyone here representing this? Please come to the microphone and tell us your name and who you represent.
My name is Brad Sweet and I represent the Ogden Cycle Association. I'm on their board, was the past president and I'm currently in the vice president role in supporting, supporting on the board.
So can you tell us what the agricultural use is you're going to do on this property?
Yeah, there's a little history behind what we're talking about here. I think maybe five or six years ago, we worked with the previous mayor Dickamore and Boyd to figure out what was consistent with the city's needs. You guys were in the business of building the park out there at the time. The development had not occurred that we see now with Nielsen Homes and Marriott. And we were zoned agricultural. We're a nonprofit business and we came to them and asked, you know, what's, what's best for you guys? What works well? They suggested that we would be commercially zoned. The unintended consequence of that was a pretty significant tax change. We were not expecting that. While we were looking to be rezoned with something that was consistent with what the city was looking for, it was not expected that we were gonna see the tax changes that we did. So the use that you see today will be, is the use that has been going on and the use that will continue. It's currently our parking lot area, so it's basically from the road over the large berm and then to the Weber County line, which is all parking lot. And none of that is expected to change.
So you're not going to use it for an agricultural use?
It was agricultural.
That's not the question. Are you going to use it for an agricultural use?
And the A1 zone is a residential zone.
Yeah, and you see...
Which makes me scratch my head on this.
Well, and personally, when we talk about what we should be zoned, we were told that we should be looking at A1 because that was consistent with the city map back in the day. We were zoned agricultural because we predated zoning. The city had us identified as residential on the map, but we were actually agricultural in Weber County, again predating zoning. So when we said, hey, we're not residential, what's best for you guys? We're, we're not agricultural, but we're zoned agricultural because we predate zoning, then they come up with the commercial.
So, right. Here's, here's the problem. You are using it for a commercial use. A parking lot is a commercial use.
Understood. So what we're trying to do is protect the nonprofit association from a million dollars worth of taxes. We're being taxed and assessed on a million dollars worth of land that isn't a million dollars worth of land, won't be a million dollars worth of land. So we're in a real predicament and we wouldn't be here if we didn't change the zoning. Through some consistent, long-term, it took us about five months of discussions with the city to figure out what we wanted to do and now we've got the unintended consequences.
Well, so...
How long ago was it rezoned?
About, I'm guessing here about five or six years ago.
But you rezoned it for a commercial use and you're using it as a commercial use?
Well, we, we have a nonprofit.
Doesn't matter. It's, it's the use. You're using it as a commercial use. So how can we recommend to the city council or even have a public hearing to change it to an agricultural slash residential use if you have no intention of using it that way?
I look at the property and you're using, you have two uses. A berm, which is a sound barrier and a dust barrier, which is also related to the commercial entity. And you have parking, which is related to the commercial entity. So it's an incredible stretch to go from there to residential. Now, if you were saying, I'm gonna, we're gonna level the, we're gonna take down the berm, which I wouldn't want you to do, and we're gonna have subdivided into lots and so forth, we wouldn't be having this discussion, but...
Have you appealed the taxes at all?
Yes, we have. We had a tax appeal hearing two weeks ago and we're waiting the outcome of that. It didn't seem favorable. The tax appeal was based on the fact that we're a nonprofit entity and that we were identified as a 501(c)(3) by the IRS. And however, Weber County does not identify us as a 501(c)(3) for, or a nonprofit for a number of reasons. So we took that Weber County decision to the tax, state tax board and we're waiting the outcome of that. Again, I suggest that it's probably not favorable, so we are looking at this opportunity as a way to protect the health of the organization.
We might be, well, you could also reduce just the basis in the commercial to get the taxes down to do just a regular appeal.
I'm not familiar with that.
Because you did an appeal based on the fact that you're a nonprofit.
Correct.
Where you can do an appeal just based on value too. So have someone pull comps in the area of...
They have and that's, that's why it's being assessed the way it is.
You have no written documentation of this prior arrangement or this prior discussion?
Oh, well, we have city records of, of the zoning change, but we don't have any...
Talking about the agreement, the arrangement you had with the former mayor.
That's my conversation with Boyd. When I spoke with Boyd...
Here's the challenge. You changed it to use it as a commercial use. You are currently using it as a commercial use. You now want to change it to a one acre lot, so the zoning you're asking for would have a home and one acre of agricultural property associated with it. That's not the use.
We would like suggestions from the Planning Commission or anybody else within the city on what an applicable zoning could be for us, recreational if you will. In other words, we're not running a for-profit business there in a commercial sense. This is 100% volunteer-based. There's one employee who operates the tractor. It's been operating consistently like this since 1956 and we have a group of members and folks that basically support the whole thing. We would like to be a park. We would like to be recreation. We would like to be something of this nature that fits in on, consistent with what the city has at their park. This is its own little facility. You don't have anything like that, from what I'm told. So the suggestion from Boyd and the mayor was what we presented here. This is because of my conversation with Boyd five years ago, this big process, unintended consequences, we are where we are today.
Okay.
If we're open to any suggestion, creating a new zone?
Well, that's, that's, you gotta take that to the city council, okay? So you're asking us to do something that is contrary to the use of the property. What is the desire of the Planning Commission?
I understand your dilemma, but we are, we're bound to follow what our code says relative to the zones.
I understand your position as well. And so I'm just, I'm looking for advice as a...
Is this property, there's some of it in Far West and some of it in Box Elder, is that correct?
Yeah, the...
My question is, how is it zoned in Box Elder, just out of curiosity?
We should annex into Box Elder County. Might be cheaper. We need, we are gonna find a solution to this because it will kill us over time. It is a way to bankrupt something that should not be bankrupt. It's a, it's a little jewel that sits out there that is nowhere, there's nothing like it in the state of Utah. There's nothing like it in multiple states.
And there's never been, you've managed your business well. I mean, so that's, that's not even the issue we're talking about here.
Thank you. Yeah, so what we've got is we're on the edge of two counties. The off-roading, if you will, is going on in Box Elder, unincorporated Box Elder County, et cetera, and it will stay that way. There's no expectations to move anything or whatnot. And we've got a connection to the Weber, Weber Basin Canal in Weber County, Far West City. We were incorporated into Far West City when you guys became a city in the, you know, 70s or however that turned out, but we... But we've been basically a legal non-conforming use since nineteen fifty-six.
So here's the challenge now. If we change you to an M or an A-one zone, you have to remove the parking lot, and you no longer can park cars there.
Right, and we don't want to do that either, so.
So, so-
Can now run through the property?
Uh, there is, we own property on both sides of the canal, yes.
That's a problem when you talk annex, uh, Weber County.
Yeah, I don't, but you can try, but.
That would be-
Well, we're looking for advice, and I figure this is the place to come.
So we are a recommendation body to the city council. Uh, if you want a, a different zone, adding a, a use to a, an existing zone, all that would have to go to the city council first, and then they may or may not ask us to review it.
Yeah, well, I, I think what will likely occur is this will go nowhere here. I'll have a conversation with the mayor and Boyd again to just get some additional advice, and maybe they'll have some.
I think that's what we need to kind of do is dig through, I mean-
Well, I, I think rather than just flatly deny it-
Right, exactly.
We would table it because right now we don't have the mechanism-
Right.
That's fine, that's fine. I would appreciate being tabled.
Is that a motion? Yeah. So we have a motion by Lou to table this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Greg. Further discussion to the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. This item is tabled.
So now to his credit, what are we gonna do? We, we just spent a little time. But we can, we can discuss this. We can have a little, we can devote a little time to work-
No, I, and, and we can discuss it, but we have been specifically asked not to take things on of ourselves. So we have to have direction from the city council to-
You can go to the city council next week.
So what I would do is see if you can get on the agenda and ask the city council for help.
And have them maybe put it on us for the planning commission to do a little research on it, because this guy's a-
Solutions could range widely from annexation to a new zone to-
And we need to remember too, to take a second too. This guy's a member of our community, functioning a business, and we need to take in just a moment to, he, he runs a pretty cool organization for kid, a lot of kids in our neighborhood.
That's my very reason for my comment. I don't think we, it has nothing to do with punitive action. We, we, we are confined to the code.
I just want to remember that, that we're here for this.
Only I understand your position and what you have to do, um, and I'll give-
We can have a discussion about it, if then mandated by the city council. Yeah. Okay.
So, I have one more question. So where he was in talks with Boyd and mayor before, were those private conversations? Or was that in front of the city council?
No, actually, I think the city attorney participated in those as well at the time. There was a number of talks. We probably met a good half a dozen times and kind of wrestled this thing around and figured out what was the right thing to do. Something that was consistent that the city felt good about, and, and then of course the unintended consequences of the talks.
Well, be, be very careful with a simple rezon. Because in the zoning, there are permitted uses within every zone.
I, I hear you on what you just said about-
So if, if you put it in a given zone, it has to meet the use requirements of that zone.
Well, we went, we've gone to some great expense to, uh, I guess you'd say, improve our facility.
With the berm and other things, yeah.
Well, it's, to, to my knowledge, there's never been a complaint.
Well, we work really hard to, to do what we do. And, uh, like I said, it's, it's a one of a kinds place, and, um, so, it's a bit of a labor of love, and this is really a difficult thing.
Get on the agenda. Don't do any more private conversations.
No, no, like I said, they weren't, they weren't, uh, the previous ones.
Call Lindsay at the city.
Right.
Get on next week's agenda for the city council and tell exactly what you just told us. And, and ask for that same, they are just seeking solutions, potential solutions.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the consent items, approval of the minutes of the July fourteenth meeting. Is there a motion?
I motion we approve the minutes dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Brandon to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Geneva. Further discussion to the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Report on assignments, Darren.
So we had a trails committee meeting last night. Robert Alexander was appointed chairman of that committee. Um, we talked about the, uh, interconnectivity between the parks and the signage and so forth, and we talked about, uh, what we need to do to get approval to use the canal banks as trails as well. And Robert took on those assignments to call, make calls necessary to get permission to use the canal.
That is great. Thank you, Greg.
I'm gonna pick up the maps for the transportation from Johnson Associates.
Super good.
The open house.
Geneva?
I have nothing.
Lou?
No.
Lyle?
Real quick, we had a meeting last night, yesterday afternoon about four o'clock. Um, we were trying to schedule with this individual on the pump track, but he works, obviously. He's got jobs in the morning during the day. Came out, met him yesterday afternoon, and, uh, just kind of went over the logistics and stuff. We gotta put in some water lines because we gotta be able to wet that down as they're building it. And we're, they're just gonna start the process. They're gonna put in kind of a, a lodgepole fence that separates the parking lot between the pump track itself and all these different things. But I'll keep you updated as it goes along, but it's moving forward. This is gonna take time.
Very good, thank you. Brandon?
I don't have anything.
I will entertain a final motion. Motion by Ja- Geneva to adjourn. Second by Greg. Further discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.
Yeah.
I am not tax savvy enough to have me.
What, you couldn't get on wifi?
Nah, we've heard from everybody in here. I usually bring it up. I probably, I, I mean, for the record, if you're ever conducting, you should ask. Twenty twenty-two, but we'd heard from everybody here, so. But legally, if you're ever challenged on how you run the meeting, your lot's better off if you've asked. Alrighty.